Mr. Whitcliff? Mr. Boyd?
Here.
Mr. Beveridge?
Here.
Ms. McKeon?
Here.
Ms. Schultz?
Here.
Ms. Velter?
Here.
Mr. Geary?
Here.
All right, will you all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, I believe we are going to jump into the public comments section. Mr. Geary, would you like to read a note?
At each regular meeting, the Board of Education reserves a limited time for individuals wishing to address the board. Individuals addressing the board should come to the podium at the front of the room and state your name. Tonight, we request that individual speakers limit their comments to five minutes. A staff person will monitor the time and notify the speaker when the five-minute time limit has expired. Please direct your comments to the entire board, and if a response is appropriate, the president will respond or refer to another individual. In an effort to respect privacy, we ask that speakers refrain from discussing personal complaints involving individual staff members or students. Those speaking are advised that public comments are videotaped recorded for broadcast on the district's educational access channel and audio recorded as a matter of public record.
Thank you, Mr. Geary. Okay, at this time, we will bring in our first public comment speaker, Ms. Gabby Martell.
My name is Gabby Martell, and I'm a senior at Alatha West. We're in the middle of unprecedented times, and I realize that the school board officials are faced with many hard decisions. However, it is important to focus on all the facts, both quantitative and qualitative. On October 22nd, 26th, and 28th, parents and staff received emails stating there were positive cases reported in my school. With three separate cases reported in less than one each other, I'm sure you can see how this would be alarming. According to the DEDF's website, there has not been a single week that more than one case has been reported. From September 8th to October 29th, there have been 217 total cases. The grading criteria states that schools will switch to remote only at an incident rate of 251 cases or more. According to Johnson County Health Department, as of this afternoon, the incidents rate is up to 441 cases. This is well beyond the number of cases that falls within a safe category, and the positive test rates keeps rising. If you will not follow your own grading criteria in determining how the schools operate, how can you expect students, staff, and parents to believe you when you claim to value the safety of your schools? There's another issue with the grading criteria you got through the last board meeting. Scientists criticize this new method of determining positive tests rates. Their skepticism of this new method comes from the fact that this new way of calculating the percentage actually creates a falsely low number. While the percent positivity rate you're currently using is at 11%, which is already a high number, the percent positivity rate that scientists and the CDC believes is more accurate is up to 19.4%. Taking into account that these numbers have real consequences, how can you feel secure sending students and staff into your schools on a daily basis? You may argue that students have the option to switch from in-person to online a semester. Well, this is true, this is an unfair decision for students and parents to have to make. Yes, we have until November 6th to change to remote only, but it is unfair to expect students and parents to make a semester-long decision that is unable to be changed when they are changing drastically every day. How can parents and students make a decision that cannot be changed when you ignore and change your grading criteria when it is inconvenient for you? Also, on Tuesday, parents received an email from the district stating that families would no longer be notified of a COVID case in the building if they were not directly exposed. What purpose does this serve other than to hide unflattering information? Parents and students deserve to know about cases in schools, even if they were not directly exposed. While those on the opposing side of this debate may claim that COVID poses little risk to students, they often forget that some students have asthma, diabetes, and other health conditions that put them at higher risk than their peers. They also forget to think about the risks posed for our teachers. Not only this, but they do not consider that students who become infected go home and spread this illness to family members. I have friends who live full-time with their grandparents. If they're to take this virus home to their grandparents, it could be deadly. I personally do almost all of my grandmother's virtual shopping as she falls into a high-risk headwear for COVID and has mobility issues. If I become infected with COVID, I'll be unable to get her food she needs, and she will have to risk being exposed or keep her pantry stocked. This is not even taking into consideration the issues of the hybrid system we've entered place. Put it plain and simple, 45 minutes is not enough time to learn what we need to for each class. I've had multiple teachers acknowledge this as well, stating that we do not have time to do what their lesson plans normally include. Because of this lack of class time, we are also having to do more homework outside of class. This is causing unnecessary stress for students that are having to lose sleep just to keep up on their assigned homework. While everyone wants to return to normal, we need to acknowledge that right now, that is impossible. For the safety of everyone involved, we must return to normal. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Brett McFall.
Hey, my name's Brett McFall. I know we've talked a lot of email. I'm a father of six girls, four that attend Alatha's schools, two that will in the future. I'm also the head basketball coach at Shawnee Mission South, and I'm a social studies teacher there. I've been a teacher for 16 years. What I want to start with today is messages that we send. As a teacher, as a coach, as a school board, as a superintendent, as a district, as a principal, we send messages every day. For example, as a basketball coach, if I tell you to run down, sprint to the other baseline, touch the baseline, and come back, and we run our sprint, and we come back, and you miss the baseline, and I don't say anything, or I don't confront that, what type of message am I sending to my players? Hey, you know, whatever Coach McFall says, he really doesn't mean it because, you know, I said, "Touch the baseline," but we didn't, he didn't do anything. As a father, if I ground my daughter from her phone, and I take the phone, and later that night, she comes, "Hey Dad, I want to use the phone." No, you're grounded from it. If I give her the phone, what type of message does that send? Well, even though you're grounded, sure, if you need to use it, I'll let you use the phone. Let's talk about the messages that have been sent late. Couple months ago, kids wanted to have a sit-in in a parking lot to learn, to go to school and learn, take their computers and sit in a parking lot and just be normal. If you Alatha schools had cop cars parked and blocking the entrances, had Alatha vans blocking the entrances, what type of message does that send to our kids? They can't sit in and have peaceful protests because they want to go to school? They want to put cop cars in front of the entrances? Other messages that are being sent, I'm standing up here fighting for my kids and fighting for other kids. We've had numerous people that have come up here that are teachers, members of the O-N-A-N-E-A, that are arguing to keep kids out of school. I don't know about you, but I got into education to help kids and to do what's best for them, and what's best for them is for them to be in school. That's why I got into education, for the kids. And we have people arguing to keep them out of school. Once again, what type of message does that send? Are we putting the kids first? I mean, heck, we got bars and casinos open, but heaven forbid, my daughters can go to school two times a week, and then next week, three times a week? I'll tell you this much, when they come home from Tuesday and Thursday, they got a little bounce in their step. They're a little happy because they went to school, and it's normal. Monday, Wednesday, the next week, it's normal. And they go back to their hybrid, and they lay in bed, and they're on their computer, and they're on a screen all day. But who's putting the kids first? I can tell you, being the last couple of weeks at Shawnee Mission, it's been awesome to have kids there. It's a little different, but you just see them, they're in their norm. Hey, yeah, everybody's wearing masks, we're spaced out in the cafeteria. In the cafeteria, I'll be honest with you, it's a little sad. They all sit six feet apart, and they're kind of strained to talk to each other. But you know what, they're there, and they got a little normalcy returned to their life. But when we have teachers that are arguing to keep, I mean, how is a teacher any different than any other essential worker? I've been teaching for 16 years, like I said. The Hy-Vee cashier right down the road, working eight to five every day, coming in contact with thousands of people, doing their job every day. No different than a teacher, no different than the nurse that's putting their life on the line every time. If you don't want to teach, get a new job. Just like if you're a nurse and you didn't want to go back, it was too dangerous, you have the liberty to get a new job. What I would love to see, 100% in-person. You've seen the studies, Europe's been doing it since April. There's been no high spikes, there's been no clusters in the school. The many conversations that I have with our administration, our people, the schools are the safest place to be. Why? Because we have stuff implemented. If I could tell you all the hoops I've had to jump through for basketball, I'm jumping through them because I want to do it for the kids. It's going to look a little differently, but I would propose, starting here second semester, we get them all in school full-time. And if you don't want to do that, then let's keep the virtual option. Hey, here's what we're going to do, here's your math teacher, here's your English teacher, here's your chemistry teacher for online, and if that teacher doesn't want to stay at school, that's fine. That makes that teacher happy, and then the kids, they can go do that online stuff. But all the other kids that you guys all sent those forms out in the summer, all those other kids that want to be at school, let's get them at school. And one last thing, is when we're quarantining these kids, there's got to be something better set up, and these healthy kids are sitting there and not having any contact with their teachers for 14 days. I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Arushi Por.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Arushi Por, and I'm a sophomore in the Medical Professions Academy at Alatha. On March 13th, with only four confirmed COVID cases in Kansas and about 405 nationwide, schools were declared canceled for the foreseeable future. Considering that we were just about to start spring break, most students, myself included, expected that we would be back a week after our planned return. However, that changed on March 17th, when Governor Laura Kelly announced that schools would be out of session for the rest of the school year in Kansas. From then on, the people of America, including our families, neighbors, and communities, had to face many challenges. Students and teachers had to bring the classroom to their homes through online schooling, a change which proved to be difficult for many. Many were exposed to the virus, and some even had to watch their loved ones pass away from COVID-19. While all of this was happening, COVID-19 cases continued to rise at a rate similar to that of the 1918 flu epidemic. As schools started in September, many schools continued online learning, such as the Alatha School District. Although continuing online school proved to be difficult for many students and staff members, everyone banded together and worked hard because they believed that this decision is what is best for themselves, their family, and the school district. On October 19th, the day that students started coming back to schools in the district, there were 1,894 new COVID cases, and ever since, the cases have been increasing, with 3,804 new cases that day and 90,613 total cases of COVID-19 as of November 3rd in Kansas alone. This is just a small portion of the total nationwide cases, which are over 9 million. It's clear that making this decision to bring a majority of the students and staff of the district back to school is not the right one right now. We need to consider the consequences attached to this decision. The students and teachers have families as well, and allowing them to return back to school at a time when someone can easily be exposed to the virus can put entire families at risk. There are feedbacks from some fellow students, many guidelines that have been put in place for those doing in-person, such as one-way direction hallways, have been completely ignored. On top of that, at some schools during passing period, the hallways are absolutely packed with students. What is happening right now is undoubtedly unacceptable, but fortunately, you all have the opportunity to reverse this mistake that has been made before circumstances get worse. If we don't switch back to being fully online, more people will get exposed to COVID-19, which would result in more possible deaths, and no one wants to see that happen. I understand that online school is difficult. I'm an online student myself, who is taking honors and AP classes, and I understand how hard it is to adapt to online school while doing difficult work and not knowing how prepared I would be for the upcoming AP test. We should only go back to school when it is safe to, and right now, it is not safe to keep members of the Alatha School District going back to school at risk. I hope you all understand my concerns as a student and member of the Alatha School District. This is why I urge you to please stop placing our students and staff and members in deadly situations and to bring all of us back online until circumstances get better. It's important more now than ever to take a step back, evaluate the situation, and understand what steps we need to take next. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Patrick Leonard.
Hello, I'm Patrick Leonard. I have two daughters in the Alatha School District. Thank you for the opportunity to address you all this evening. So my message tonight is relatively simple. I would be remiss if I didn't share it. I feel like it's something that many parents are feeling and have felt for months, if not certainly more recently, weeks with the election activity and all that kind of things. But I'd be remiss if I didn't mention it. And because I haven't heard it directly, the message is that we live in a community. All of us live in a community, Community of Alatha, Community of Johnson County, help the community of the United States. Our schools are a part of that community, they are not bubbles. Our kids go to school, they come home, they're at home, they go back to school. They interact with their parents, their grandparents, their brothers, their sisters. They go to scouts, they go to sports, they go to all kinds of other church, all kinds of other extracurricular activities. These are all opportunities for community spread, we live in a community. Very often, they're unmasked when they're at sports and they interact with family members. And that's fine, that's great, that's all well and good. But we have to realize that when they come to school, they're bringing with them that level of community spread, that level of exposure. Our numbers continue to increase, and we seem to forget these kinds of things because, I don't know, they're inconvenient, they're unpopular. The fact that we live in a community, the fact that in the last month, I mean, I was on the Alatha School District site this morning, and I think it showed, October 5th, we're at 6. something, 6.6, and today we're at 11. That's a month. We've gone now almost double, we've gone up basically a percent a week in positivity rate. We're now at 11 out of every 100 people. So if we had 100 people in this room, 11 of them would be positive for COVID. Social distancing aside, that's a pretty high number. That's pretty scary high. People were talking about it being high when it was 3 and 4%. We're now at 11, and the numbers continue to get higher every day. Florida's setting new records. You know, they're talking about all kinds of just new spreader events across the country. The number's getting up there. So our incidence rate likewise has gone from below 200s, and I think it was 450 or something today. Again, we hear from parents talking, "Oh, but the kids are fine, the kids are fine." They're resilient, they're hardy, and, you know, the kids aren't dying. And oh, there's only been one kid that's been pulled out. Kids don't live on an island. They go to school, they come home, they interact with their parents, their parents who have diseases, their parents who see their grandparents. My wife's grandmother just tested positive for COVID, she's 98. So we're hoping and praying that she's going to live through it. But it certainly isn't because she left, it's because somebody brought COVID into her. So the point is that we live in a community. Community spread is a very real thing. I ask that you consider that when you consider hybrid models, in-person models, remote models. So all the while, though, all I've seen over the last few months is that we're playing with numbers. We've changed algorithms, and we've added absenteeism counts, so we have that one count as we add it up. So technically, it's mathematically impossible for us to go back to red. That's not cool. We, at best, will be at a decision point where we can do hybrid or remote, and frankly, based on the history of what I've seen, I think because it's unpopular and because we're deferring to decisions of sports and some memory of months and months ago of what's normal, that's now neither practical nor safe, that we're going to decide to continue this, you know, moving down the path as though it's returning back to school in person to some foregone conclusion. And I've done some research, and I come from a family of teachers who, in other school districts, Miami, Boston, Los Angeles, Houston, all use 5% as their threshold for remote learning. For some reason, we're double or triple that. I don't understand why we think Alatha's different. So based on tonight's agenda, clearly, you've got other things to talk about. This is no longer the number-one priority. But I ask and implore, as our leaders, especially as our publicly-elected leaders, that you act as servant leaders. I act as though that when you say you're continuously working with state and local health officials, it's right there on the website, that we not play with numbers, that we be genuine and authentic in our communication. I ask that, frankly, you don't say that keeping parents informed is vital, and then say that we're not going to inform parents anymore of cases in schools. So we have a country that's divided, we have clearly parents that are divided about where, you know, what the next right decision is. I ask, as our servant leaders, you put the community first, you be transparent with the data that's out there.
Your time's up, Mr. Leonard.
Got it, thank you.
Next up is Brian Connell.
Hi. Didn't know we got five minutes, so mine's under two and a half. I'll get, I'll see the time back. So some of y'all remember me from the last couple of meetings, so I'm Brian Connell. I've got two kids and two high schools here, and I want to start a little differently, and I want to start by saying thank you. November is the month in which we work to express our thanks, our gratefulness. And I absolutely want to say thank you to this board and to our administrators for putting the kids back into their classrooms. I'm grateful that all the kids in Alatha, unlike some other school districts, actually get to see their teachers. Their teachers get to see the kids. That's really, really critical. And in October, my concern was the mental health of our kids. I have literally gotten hundreds of messages and DMs from teachers, kids, and parents saying, "It is a joy to see our kids again. It is a joy to be in the classes." It's almost magical. Is it perfect? No. But, you know, it is exponentially better for the kids. However, as we all know the situation, we're calling it hybrid, and I really want to get us using different words because it's not really a hybrid. Our high school kids are actually doing half-dick, so let's use the word "half-dick." And our middle school kids are really only doing every other day. So they're really part-time. I think using hybrid really has a different connotation. It really says, hey, the same kids are getting the exact same experiences online as they would in the class, and then vice versa when they're not there. But we're not really meeting that expectation. For the teachers, while the kids are getting half the education that they really ought to, our teachers, they're working twice as hard. Every teacher has said, "I love my kids, I love seeing the kids, but I am now working twice as hard giving the same lecture twice a day." It's brutal, working 12, 14 hours a day. And so I want to truly acknowledge the teachers who are putting in a Herculean effort, and for the administrators that are supporting them. We want to make sure that they're safe. But we ought to keep moving forward. I'm not advocating we go backwards. There's no way you'll get me or anybody that I know that wants to go back to full remote. It's not right, it's not safe, just distance. However, we need to support our online learners. We are in a situation where, I understand, the school district is actually capable of fully supporting all the online learners today and capable of fully supporting all of the in-school learners today. So what I want to advocate is that we do it full-time. Let's take care of everyone the way they want to be taken care of. You go to the doctor, you want to be taken care of. Let's go to school, let's take care of them the way they should, full-time. Johnson County might be orange or red, but if you look at the stats of your own school district, OSD, if it was its own city or county, would be green. And I say that because the schools have done a tremendous job. Their staff, their students, and their families at home are doing everything possible to prove that sports, extracurricular, and classrooms are safe. The data's showing it, will continue to show it, and it shows it all over the state, the county, and the country. You have a motivated population in front of you. Don't punish them for the errors of others. If one of my teenagers is a problem, I do not ground the other one. If our county, and the stats are all showing that the schools are not the spreaders, if the county is doing their problems, do not punish the kids. Our quarantine model needs a little tweaking. It's a little flawed, and I'm going to ask you to revisit it, please. 14-day quarantine for kids who've been in a room, maybe a little vulnerable. What I want to ask is to give teachers and students the time together to be successful, to move towards kids, teachers, and staff in the classrooms together where they're safer together. So I'm going to end with, thank you. Keep moving forward, keep thinking about the kids. So have a good night.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kirsten Wetterstrom.
Hi, my name is Kirsten Wetterstrom. I'm a senior at Alatha East High School. I've come to notice, experiencing both hybrid and online learning, that there are a lot of things missing in the online model that would be beneficial to a student's learning. As I know, we understand how much mental health is important to everyone. As parents, teachers, and higher-ups, the mental health of a student should be more important, in my opinion. However, I'm sure studies were made about the mental health of students in online compared to hybrid. Hybrid would be a better standing of mental health. Online creates a social isolation piece that you wouldn't get if you were online or if you were in person or in hybrid. Social isolation can be detrimental to a student's health because they wouldn't have the opportunities such as collaborating or creating meaningful and holding those conversations. Those two skills are very important to learn, and I'm sure you all could agree. I understand that the safety of teachers and students are a priority for their physical health, but so should the mental aspect of it. Students rely on schools to help them build lifelong skills such as routines and timeliness, one of which students won't get moving back to online, routine. While routines do change, we rely on schools to stay consistent. Another downside to going back online is that students have to intermix being in class, doing schoolwork, and balance whatever is going on at home, which can elevate their stress levels and does not improve the learning environment. Certain students may have to deal with family issues and/or outside distractions in their homes. We want an education where the platform we use will help us learn and retain information, and sadly, online isn't giving us that. Many grades have been able to improve in the last week because teachers are easy or easily accessible, and the way it's taught is easier to retain. And plus, finishing the semester off in hybrid wouldn't put as much stress on the students as online would, including the semester. I also believe that starting the second semester off in person full-time would be beneficial to students within middle and high school hours. If we do go in person, I suggest two weeks after the end of winter break, being an online quarantine after hot holiday travels to keep everyone safe. We are willing to wear our masks, social distance, and we are washing and sanitizing our hands. All we want is to be in school by choice, that you gave us to start the year and to make memories. Some of the best school memories are made in high school, sports, school spirit, dances, and memories made with our friends. As a senior in high school, I am highly doubtful that I will ever have a high school dance again. I didn't have a junior prom and probably won't be able to experience any senior dances. Powder puff didn't happen. Senior athletic and academic signings won't happen in current fall, they are not. Senior picnic won't happen. I just want a semi-normal last half of my year, and I want to be in-person the entire semester. I want to make that happen. We know that there are still going to be limitations and things we're unable to do, but I know me and my fellow high school and middle school students are willing to make that happen. We want to keep everyone safe, and we are doing everything as best. This is the type of semi-normal I want in the people we meet. As well as being a senior at Alatha East, I am in the Future Educators Academy, also known as FBA. As every academy, we have a senior capstone. For FBA, ours is to go out and get an in-field experience before we go off to college. It's something we've been looking forward to for the past four years of high school. It requires us to go to another school, and the teacher I chose goes to Alatha West High School. I know that there are still ways to conduct contact tracing. That would also have to be something schools would have to collaborate with as well. And hybrid is making it hard to teach while we still have to zoom into classes. I only wish to fulfill my senior capstone as intended. With your help, I believe we can make such a challenging and difficult year into a great one. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. And our last speaker is Dr. Julia Wenzel-Hugley.
Hello, good evening. I'm sure I'm the most anticipated speaker, right, of the room, the last one to go. So as you said, my name is Dr. Julia Wenzel-Hugley. And so first off, I want to say a good evening to all of you opposed. And so first off, I want to say a good evening to all of you, both of you that are here in the room. I also want to extend my greetings and gratitude to all of you watching at home. I know that some of you are colleagues currently in quarantine. Others are parents that are desperate for information and you need to make that difficult decision of what's going to happen for next semester. I know that there are statewide colleagues watching from other districts interested to find out what's going to happen here in Aletha, here in Johnson County. I admit, I wasn't sure if I should speak tonight for a lot of different reasons, both personal and professional, but I knew that I wouldn't be able to sleep tonight if I didn't do what I couldn't. I know that I have some families of students that I teach that won't agree with what I have to say, but I can't stay silent. There's a lot of my colleagues, other professionals in the building, other staff members that can't see. So this is for them, our counselors, our custodial staff, our paraprofessionals, those that fear they may have a target put on them if they say something. As I said, my name is Dr. Wenzel. I'm a German and English teacher, and my home school is Aletha North. I spent the last 11 out of my 30 years pursuing degrees and working hard to be the best teacher that I can. Currently working on my National Board certification through all of this. This is my third year in this district. I've worked in another Johnson County school as well as in Nashville, Tennessee. I've earned my Master of Arts in Teaching, and I earned my Doctorate last year. I say all this to say, I understand the weight and the difficulty of the decisions that you all have to make. And in no way do I envy any of the positions that you are all in. Like some of my colleagues, I am teaching both remote and in-person students. Both have their advantages, both have their challenges. And today I want to share a little bit of what it's like to be in the classroom. I'll start with the remote classes. If any of my parents or students are listening, this has been the best blessing that I've had. I am so thankful that I get to work with students all over our district. My colleagues, my German colleagues, there's only five of us, we've talked about ways that we can continue this in-school collaboration. I was a little nervous for call conferences, meeting with families from other schools, not knowing what those students would say about being in the online environment. But I was surprised to hear that they had a lot of the things to say that I've heard in the past. My students and I are still building those relationships and learning is still happening. Now, when it comes to in-person classes, I heard a lot of the students speaking in all the meetings before this, and it sounded like it would be this utopia, that they'd go back to a normal, but I haven't seen that in my own classroom. Some students that were so excited, they told me during conferences or during class that they were excited to come back, must be so excited that they just want to text their friends or email family members during class because they're often distracted by their screens. So I know that nothing about this school year has been ideal. None of this has been easy, it's been frustrating, and it feels like there's a lack of consistency and a lack of transparency. Back in July, we were told things would be different. We told there'd be a lot of care and attention to COVID mitigation. Since then, decisions that have been made have chipped away at the confidence that I had going into the beginning of this school year. We were told that we would follow a gating criteria, not the modified interpretation of data. We were given a draft of a hybrid plan that we could wrap our heads around, but instead we were presented the current plan in Zoom meetings where our ability to ask questions was taken away, and we weren't able to provide any feedback. We were told temperatures would be taken, but that fell to the wayside. Students even laughed when I asked if their temperatures were taken at home or if anybody even asked how they were feeling that day before they came to school. When it comes to cleaning, our custodial staff is constantly doing what they can. The cleaning solution that we've been provided seems to be diluted these days. Smells different, it looks different. On top of that, an alarming number of students aren't waiting the four minutes that it takes for the, the solution to work, nor are they using the hand sanitizer. I tried to set up my room to be as safe as possible, ensuring as much distance as possible, but in all classes, that doesn't happen. And I know that there's a lot of you in this room that it doesn't really matter what I have to say, and that's okay. Your opinions have been quite clear. It's not beyond me that we're recognizing American education this week. So please, all I can ask is that to remember the decisions that you make will have an impact on all of us. Thank you, and again, I'm speaking for those that don't have a voice. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Before I go on, I don't want to get it to a point where it's a back-and-forth year, but I just want to make it known publicly that there would never be a target on any teacher's back because they express their opinion to us. The board wants the opinion of all teachers, and I'm not aware of that ever happening. And I'm certain that I speak for the entire board that that would be unacceptable. So I just, I don't know if I'm supposed to comment after public comments, but I didn't want to let that slide because I don't believe that's happening. If there ever was any evidence of it, we would want to know. It is not something that we would endorse or support.
Thank you for saying that, Joe. And her opinion does matter. Her input does matter to us. We take it into consideration, so thank you very much.
Okay, let's move on to Information 3.01, American Education Week. We have a presentation.
Good evening. I am pleased to bring a video presentation to you this evening from Aletha NEA as we prepare to celebrate American education. A week later this month, this year, our schools have been challenged to educate students during a pandemic. The changes our staff face from a typical year are monumental, but our schools are open. The partnership between parents and students and staff and community members is paramount to the success of our community. And our schools are the foundation of the community in Aletha. Right now, the key to our success is the support of our greater community. We need our community to do better at wearing masks, at mitigating the risk for their students and staff. We need them to practice social distancing so that we can keep our schools open. As a community, we are all connected. The actions that we take or don't take impact the community as a whole. I really hope you enjoy a glimpse into some of the classrooms across the district so that you can see the amazing things that are happening in this crazy year of school.
American Education Week presents everyone with an opportunity to celebrate public education and honor individuals who are making a difference in ensuring that every student receives a quality education. As we celebrate the 99th American Education Week, Aletha NEA pauses to reflect on the unique challenges facing our public schools this year. The word that best encapsulates the 2020-21 school year is change. Whether it be teaching high school calculus to preschool classrooms, educators are working hard to craft lessons in ever-changing environments. From in-person, remote, hybrid, and those that teach both remote and in-person all at the same time, these challenges may seem overwhelming. Educators are digging deep to meet the educational needs of their students. Every educator knows that learning cannot be accomplished without the dedicated paraprofessionals and instructional assistants that provide the instructional support to ensure that every student can succeed. Masks up and face shields at the ready, these professionals represent the very best of our community. Healthcare heroes work within our schools. Last March, our school nurses quickly shifted from providing in-building healthcare, providing medical support to our community through contact tracing and working with public health officials to provide medical supports for our students as they were home. As the school year has started, our school nurses find themselves again on the front lines from providing for our students' everyday needs. Now, taking a student's temperature could lead to a possible unknown answer that might require contact tracing within our school buildings. Our students' mental health needs have been front and center for the past few years. The pandemic has ever more heightened the need of our students. Our school counselors and social workers are there to answer the call. Whether by Zoom or face-to-face, our professionals are here for our students and our educators that teach our students. None of this work is possible without dedicated professionals who are often hiding in plain sight. Food service workers who have worked continuously to meet a critical need, whether that be a drive-through or a pick-up-and-go meal, they stand ready so our students can focus on learning and not on an empty stomach. Teaching our students in 2020 could not happen without our outstanding technology department's professionals. From ensuring that classroom projectors will work to supporting virtual classrooms, their work is vital. Administrative assistance work has changed also. From making sure that a student picks up their art supplies contactlessly to ensuring that there's coverage for teachers that are absent due to illness. Substitute teachers enter a classroom on short notice, provide an education that looks dramatically different than ever before to ensure that students continue learning while their classroom teacher is absent. Our custodians work tirelessly to ensure that classrooms are clean to the highest standards so that educators can focus on developing lessons that will reach students. The literacy needs of our students continue to be reached by reimagining how the library works. New health and safety procedures have not stopped our library media specialists from providing our students with books. Administrators have worked tirelessly to find solutions this school year. From last-minute changes to building-wide schedules, lunchroom logistics, to coordinating with bus transportation, and so much more, all to ensure that children have a safe learning environment. Never before has our school system needed our community members' support. As we rise to this unprecedented challenge of keeping our community's most valuable resources, our children safe, while at the same time working to provide an education, preparing them for their future.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Our next item, 3.02, a reopening update.
Thank you. I'm going to take a little different approach this evening and walk back a little to make sure that everyone remembers where information's available from the district and to also talk about our district dashboard and the gating criteria. It seems like that's the never-ending topic that we always face each, each board meeting. First off, when you go to our district website and you scroll down to the bottom, you see that there's COVID information available. This is information that we continue to update as we do all portions of this, but it provides information around COVID-19, medical illness policies, immunizations. As, as evidence comes out and, and direction is given to us, you'll see pertinent links that, that are there on the website. I would encourage folks to regularly check the two areas I'm showing this evening because they are updated sometimes on a daily basis, but we're continuing trying to evolve what's there and the information that's, that's being provided. The next is the COVID-19 dashboard. And the dashboard has changed since the day we put it up, almost weekly, as, as we add information so that, that we can be forthright in our, our data and our considerations. And it will continue to do so. You will continue to see changes, additional data made available. Part of it, as we moved into hybrid with the secondary, it's given us now another set to take a look at. And I, I promise there will be other changes as we move forward. But when you come to the dashboard, you'll also see here the return to school. Return to school is the, the original documents that we developed with our plan, our mitigation strategies, a number of FAQs that are there, letters, all sorts of, of information. And that, that as well has not been a static document. As things have changed around mitigation strategies or cleaning strategies, when you go to the return to learn and you can see exactly how that, that guidance has changed and really has been the manual for our buildings as they've used opening this school year. But I want to go back and let's talk a little bit about the gating criteria. And some of the comments made this, this evening, I think I, it's important that we, we talk about. The gating criteria, and I, and I want to go back to, for the historical perspective, was something that school districts requested at a county, state, and federal level. Because when schools were shut down last March, the question that we all had as well as the one we got repeatedly is, how will we know it's safe to open schools in the fall? And whether it's the CDC, the Kansas Department of Health, or the John Kennedy Department of Health and Environment, that took time for them to develop. And as they've developed those gating criteria, they have continued to evolve them and change them based on the information that we get every single day and what we learn about this virus. If we think back to March, what we knew and compare that to today, there are stark differences. This will continue to ever change as our doctors and other experts and we see how this virus impacts our, our communities. So gating criteria that is, is, is set in stone will serve us no purpose as all of this develops moving forward. We would want them to make adjustments. And it's, it's not about trying, that, that perception about trying to create a, a criteria that gets to an end has never been what the county, the state, or the, the guidance to the CDC has been about. It's been about the changes and what we know and how it can impact schools. So when you look at the current gating criteria, as we had, had talked about, the county had continued to evaluate the way in which they measured the information. And we know that the way the state measured it and the way the county measured it, there were some differences. And the county made a decision to, to come toward the middle and look at some of the ways that the state was measuring that as well as how they, they felt like data, best practice, and the science would allow them to do that. So those changes were made intentionally, not as, as some way to, to manipulate. And I want to make that very, very clear. So when you look at the incident rate, new cases per 100,000 during the prior two weeks, these are the three components of our gating criteria. Percent positive, and that's where the, the calculation change was made on how they counted negative tests, first negative test. You can go to the county website and see their, their rationale and narrative on exactly why and how. And then the added criteria that we adopted as a school district, as we discussed and looked at all the, the various options out there to try to help us make decisions based on what was occurring in our community, was around student absenteeism. And the reason for student absenteeism is it gave us a local measure. We could truly look and see how is all of this impacting our students' attendance and access to education? And if that number is too high, we have to consider how do we reach our students and educate them? So on the website, you'll see under student absenteeism, how do we calculate that number? What we adopted was to use the KDHE, KSDE metric, which is a comparison of the average daily attendance from this year to last year. So then you'll notice on the website, we break that down on how do we actually calculate that? We're using a two, prior two-week time period, so that matches both the incident rate and the percent positive in, in two-week increments. So we're, we're consistent through all three criteria. So what it looks at is the number of students absent over a two-week period. You have to divide that by the number of days they were in school because when we do a look back and we take the same dates from this year to last year, we, there may not be 10 days in the previous year, or because we had conferences, there may have been eight in our two-week snapshot. So you've got to go through and add all of the absentee for each of the days we were in session, divide by the number of days we were in session, and then divide that by the total number of students. the total number of students enrolled, and we've used the 9/20 snapshot date. So while our enrollment fluctuates up and down some, it's not to a large extent. So we have a common number that we know we're always using, and an equal comparison from week to week and year to year. Same thing when we take a look at the 2021. So that's how we're calculating that absentee rate. So we come up with a percentage for those two weeks, what percent of our students attended on an average daily basis over that two-week look back, and that's then the comparison between last year as baseline and this year to see how is COVID and learning format, all the other things that come into play, how is that matching up? So also on the website, you will see where each of those two-week time periods, we will continue to add. So of those three criteria, you'll see where we are in the number. You will also see what the gating color is, and I'll go to our matrix here in just a second. So you see the incident rate, you see the percent positive rate, and then you see the student absenteeism rate. And on our student absenteeism, it's based on the percent difference between 1920 and 2021. And this is when you have to look at it, you have to remember that. So our baseline is when we think about 1920. So for the week of the 12th through the 23rd in 1920 school year, we had an average daily attendance absenteeism rate of 84.2%. This year, for that same snapshot time period, it was 88.5%. So the difference is the minus 4.3. If you look at 9/28 to 10/9, you'll see that in 1920, it was 89.2, and in 2021, it was 88. So there's a difference of 1.2%. So then we go back to the gating criteria matrix, and as we look, we did not have a change above the baseline building level data, so an increase in student absences compared to 2019-20 by more than 3%. So if we had more than 3% to 5.9%, you'd be in yellow. So you can see how each of those components are calculated. We pulled the Friday data, but for attendance. We have to finish the day, and all of that data in our system has to basically be transcribed. So while it's set on the Friday attendance-taking, it's Monday when we can actually see what that looks like. So that is why on our snapshot dates for our matrix, we targeted, this coming Monday is so that we have the whole two-week time period and complete attendance data. So this is exactly what we will use on Monday as we consider where we will be for the rest of November through December 14th at this point in time, is our second snapshot date, which we may need to look at so that the way the days fall to move that up just a little. So if you take a look at this, what we will do, and we will keep this worksheet up, and we will put the next one up, and when we do the next one, as long as we're continuing to use the gating criteria, that they'll be there so you can see those changes. So on Monday, we will take the Friday value for the incident rate. We will do the same for percent positive, and we will have our student absentee rate. We will place that into the matrix. We will look to see where does that place it on color. The decision was made that we would count each of the three criteria points equally. So a green is worth one point, up to red worth four points. So you would then add the points, divide by three, that gives us the number, and then that will give us where we are on the gating level criteria. So pretty straightforward. We've tried to put all the information that will go in into that decision. With the calculation sheet there, anybody could take that information, put it in, and come up with a gating criteria result themselves. Yes?
When a decision is made to recommend that a student is quarantined, how is that student counted in our absentee system?
They're counted absent. So when we look at absenteeism, for whatever reason that they're not at school, quarantine, illness, family vacation, that counts as an absence. So we have not eliminated. Now, the one change I didn't mention, when we calculate the attendance for 2021, that does not include remote students. So we took the September 20th snapshot date, then we removed the number of remote students, and that because we're really only wanting to measure those students that are attending in person. Good question. So any absence, you're included as being absent in those numbers. Then when we get into the confirmed cases, we're updating these on a weekly basis. You can see the process and what we do. We were very careful as we started this process to make sure that we were maintaining privacy and confidentiality, not putting data that could identify individual students, which is why we elected at the beginning to not use data by individual schools, because an individual student or staff member could be identified. As we progress over the weeks and those numbers increase enough, we are looking at how we'd be able to provide that data by school so that folks could see what's occurring. Right now, we do it by total week. You could see total new cases in those in quarantine. These are all the students that we're aware of. This does not mean this is specifically school transmission, and I think that's important. And as we continue to look at our dashboard and move forward, we're looking at that information. Do we have enough information from the contact tracing and feedback we get to eventually be able to identify what do we see as school transmission and what are we seeing as community transmission? Because right now, the data indicates, in the county and ours seems to be following, you're anywhere from 70% to 75% of transmission is occurring outside of school. Roughly 25% or so is occurring potentially between individuals at school or activities, those types of things. But the majority of it is occurring outside of school, it's being transmitted within family units and weddings, those types of things. And that's, as we're able to identify that and refine that information, I think that's important information for us to take a look at. Because the question, particularly after Tuesday, when the county took the gating criteria to red, but then specifically told schools that they did not recommend us changing our learning modes, because right now, the level of transmission in schools is much lower than what we're seeing in the community. And that's due to all the hard work for mitigation, it's due for all the hard work of our staff, our students trying to wear the masks, hand wash, follow the mitigation strategies, and we've been successful. If we were doing all of that as a community as a whole, we wouldn't see the incident rates where we see it today. And when we think of the incident rates, we continue to see those increase, and it is concerning when we look at those numbers. Yet the county has recognized the internal numbers, which is why we will continue to refine our internal numbers and be able to put that on the dashboard as well, so that it gives a complete picture, not just of community, but in our schools. When you look at these numbers, we've been successful so far mitigating a significant difference in schools compared to the county. But there reaches a point, because as one of our speakers said earlier, we're a community, and if we continue on an ever-increasing trajectory for incident rate and percent positive, it will impact our school. It will push us to a point where we're going to have to reconsider our learning modalities. It will impact our staff, and without our staff, we can't hold school in almost any format. So those are real concerns that we need to have as a community, that we need to do the right things. We need to continue to mask, to wash hands, to avoid large groups. All those recommendations that are being made, obviously are not being followed because we're seeing the incident rates go up, but school districts have been following them. And guess what? Our rates look better than the general community, but there will reach a tipping point where that will no longer be true. So as you could see, our student new cases per week, number of quarantine, we've graphed that. To make it a little easier, again, we'll continue to update this information. Then as we compare staff, the staff data, new cases per week, and total quarantines. Again, we're continuing to refine, and we'll be able to add additional information for each of these areas. One of those factors that we will be adding next week is that percent of our student population or percent of our staff that are impacted, because that's another internal measure that we want to take a look at, and we want to be careful that we're tracking it so that we can see when those numbers begin to change, you know, what type of actions do we need to take? Same with the staff COVID numbers in the charts, and then we have examples of the letters that are here. And while we're on the letters, I want to address communication that we sent out regarding the lowest-level incident letter, which we started at the beginning of the school year, since there wasn't a lot of data available, that in essence just informed families that there was a case in the school building. As cases have gone up, as we've seen in the community, but in particular when we brought middle school and high school students back, and you're now talking 600,000, 1,500 students that because there was a case in the building, that notification went out. With many of our families, as we talked to them, receiving one a day, if you were at a high school potentially, was causing more confusion than providing any real information. Because if you were an individual that had been exposed in some capacity, you were receiving specifics that you'd been exposed, and to what degree and what action to take. Based on comments we heard tonight and some emails, as I said, we'll continue to refine this, and we are looking at a way in which to break that down, whether it's by level, school. We want to make sure we're maintaining the privacy and confidentiality, but we will make some changes so that folks are able to track that. The intent is not to hide numbers, they're right here, and you can see them, but was to reduce really the unsustainability of staff, the confusion it was creating with many of our parents and the phone calls that would come following that. So as we have throughout this process, we will continue to work and refine our communication and the information we provide on the dashboard. So be happy to take any questions, but you know, a lot of this is, if you looked back a couple of weeks ago, much of this information wasn't there yet, and as I said, we'll continue to add to it. I would anticipate on a weekly basis, if not more often, as we can.
Mr. Allison, can you, a couple of things. One, could you confirm we don't round on the total number, is that right, on the great gating? Is that correct? So if it's a 2.6, it's still a 2. If it's a 3.8, it's a 3. Is that right? 1.8? I mean...
Yes. You need to be, as we took a look at this, that those ranges were set up with some specificity, so you need, we want to be within those ranges. So we are not rounding. We're not rounding up, we're not rounding down. As we talked about that there, that was something some districts were talking about, but we felt the range was there from the low to the high, and then you moved into the next color, and we needed to honor that and not alter around the numbers.
And secondly, I just want, I know you visit with Johnson County Health Department especially a lot this week already around some things, and they specifically spoke about how well the schools were doing, and compliments to all of our teachers and staff for continuing to maintain that. But have they said if there's much that they plan to do? It's very obvious that they were trying to say read between the lines, but the community spread is happening at people who probably should know better, right? Are there plans that they share with you about how that message is going to be sent out, or if there are plans to do anything, or is it just on the schools again?
At this point in time, there are no plans that's been shared, either at the county or the state level. I do know that both the county and the state are concerned with the community spread. You're seeing in particular out west, there have been a number of school districts that have had to step back because of community spread, and then that impacts your staff, impacts students, and they've had to go back to a remote basis. I don't know of any in this region yet. Hospitalization is once again becoming a major concern for the hospitals. We heard from KDHE today that particularly in the western part of the state, where there are fewer hospital beds, that patients are having to be shifted to the metro areas, so you're seeing them more in Dodge, coming to Wichita, and that there's a ripple effect that occurs with that. And it was explained that, you know, the ICU number was one that we all heard about in March. But as time has moved along, we've learned more about the virus, ways in which to help individuals, that for the hospitals, the ICU is an important number, but it's not really that key metric that it was in March, but that it's about the number of patients that test positive for COVID in the hospital, and that doesn't necessarily mean that they went because of COVID symptoms, but they may be in for some other reason. And the reason that becomes critical is you have to create isolation areas, staff and PPE, you can't move equipment from COVID area to a non-COVID area, and it begins to pull resources from the general hospital to be able to handle those, which was something new as we've learned about that aspect. And so there's concern as we hit the flu season, that if we don't get the community spread under control, that that may become a factor. So no specific plans. I know there's concern. You think about Halloween, we start to see, did that have impact next week? Then we hit Thanksgiving, and when you've got 70-plus percent of your spread occurring within those family units, there's concern there. And then you hit the other holidays, that, you know, where does this trajectory, if we're not doing what we can now, where does it go? Then there is a direct impact on schools, without question. I mean, it's a matter of time and to what degree, and that's why we want to continue to track some of our internal numbers a little differently. At that point, they have said that they believe that there would need to be further action of some type taken to help communities mitigate. Now, I don't know if that's, you know, masking policy is what that might be, but I know there is concern that if we don't do what we can to begin to flatten and turn this around a little, that the consequences for all of us are not what we're going to want.
So John, back in March, the long-term care facilities were kind of driving our numbers. That has shifted, right?
That shifted significantly, and they did pull those out. So if you go to the county site, you can see where they specifically, and a lot of that, again, is like all of us, we've learned. So the long-term care facilities learned what they had to do. You know, Johnson County helped a number of them, the state, and if you look, they, in most of those cases, they isolated residents of those long-term care facilities, so that the outside influence of COVID, and they've been able to mitigate it and control it within the facility. So yeah, we've seen almost a complete reversal, starting to see that number tick up a little bit again, but... Starting to see that number tick up a little bit again, but overall it's, it's, they've been pretty successful.
So what I was reading, the main driver is age 20 to 29 right now. Is that what you're hearing as well?
Yes. The state website, if you go to KDHE's website, and I, and I didn't pull it up. Here, I'd take you to it. If you actually go and then you look at the gating criteria, you can look at incident rates, you can look at new cases per 100. You can pull that down to the county level. And then for most of those measures, they have broken out by age group. Johnson County also has some of the age break, breakout, but KDHE delineates the, the first couple a little more than, than Johnson County. And, and it's interesting to see. If you look at the KDHE website, in all age categories with the exception of, if I remember correctly, it's like 60 to 75, for the last two weeks have been increasing trends. So yes, that, that 19 to, you know, 30, 10, there was the fastest growing group. But you know, those under 19 are starting to, we're starting to see increases there as well.
So the quarantines, is it a house of cards with our 14-day? I mean, that's two full weeks. And I know there's been some chatter about data showing us that potentially quarantines can be adjusted. Would you talk a little bit and share that with the community?
Yes. There's, there's conversation both at the county, state, and from what I understand, that the federal level, as we know more about the incubation period and, and some other aspects and looking on whether, you know, it was direct exposure, low exposure, some of that. They're, they're trying to get data that may allow a shortened quarantine time period. What I heard today from KDHE is that one of the areas that they've got to increase is the number of tests or the percentage of testing asymptomatic individuals, which will help them come up with the data that they could begin to look at the quarantines. But that's a, I know the CDC has also got some studies going now and they're, they're looking at, at the potential modification of quarantine.
So hopefully they're tracking the quarantines that actually convert to COVID cases. I'm sure we are as a county. At least I've requested that that happened because it lets us know if we're heavy-handed or we're not being strict enough. And that data is so critical. The districts out west that you mentioned that had to go back to remote, do you know if they had masking policies? Or do you know what the difference is between what they were doing and what we're doing?
I, I don't know at this point in time. And that's, you know, that's information that between superintendents and conversations and KSD has been really good about trying to help pull some of that and, and provide it for school districts. We don't know at, at this point in time. On the gating criteria, I know one of the, the first sets of data that they started to look at, to your question about quarantine and actually developing COVID symptoms. Part of what they, they realized is many, many individuals never went and got tested if they were quarantined. They're just like, oh, I've got my quarantine period. And so that, you know, finding out, are they asymptomatic, positive? So I, I know that that's an area that they're wanting to, to definitely upgrade some of the analysis to, to help do that. And that would, I think that would be beneficial for all, particularly schools, if we can, if we can shorten quarantine.
It would help us a lot. So for those that say, our rates are increasing because we're testing more? I mean, I mean, that's true, but it's, it's also not what's driving this increase. Wouldn't you, would you talk a little bit about that?
Yes. You know, your number, your, your percent positive will decrease when you test more theoretically, because you then begin to test asymptomatic individuals who, who would not be factored in there. That a little bit of the alarming aspect of the increase in the percent positive is predominantly they're symptomatic individuals. So we have more individuals with symptoms that are going to get tested and therefore testing, testing positive. So it's, it's a little bit, you know, the chicken or the egg on, on that aspect. But i- if you look at other states or countries that have been able to really expand their testing to the point that they're regularly testing asymptomatic individuals, then you tend to see that, that positivity rate come down. But because it's going up is not just because we're, we're testing more folks. Kansas is toward the, the bottom of overall testing. So the folks that are getting tests are showing some type of symptoms or, or have been exposed. So it, it's an indicator for sure. Any other questions?
I was gonna ask quick, sorry, I was just gonna get a quick, quick comment if, I don't know if this might be Dr. Yeager or somebody else, but I was just kinda curious. I've heard from a few teachers, either by email or other, other methods of, of just, now that we're a couple of weeks in at middle school and high school hybrid, like, like how's it going? And I don't know if that's something that you can, or somebody can talk to real quick. No, you, I don't need a floor pour or anything, but like, just kinda, are we making adjustments pretty quick? Are we, are there some things that we should be doing that we can help with? Are there, I mean, obviously stumbling blocks? Anything that, that, I'd just like a little bit of feedback on how things are generally going, if that's possible.
You know, I, I think as our comments have represented for several months at our board meeting, some, some would tell you that it's going well and some would tell you it's quite challenging right now. You know, I think in terms of our biggest stumbling block, we're trying to educate kids in a way we never have before. You know, so that includes what's the impacts that, that our, our parents are feeling at home and our kids are feeling at school. And same with our staff, as they're trying to prepare lessons to make sure kids are learning. You know, what, what I can tell you is we're still trying really hard to support people and be as nimble as we can as a system in terms of our overall expectations and grace that we offer our staff. And, you know, educators by nature are perfectionists. And, you know, we, we have to say many times, we, this, this can't be perfect. We've never done this before. There's no handbook for it. We want you to keep trying the very best you can to meet the needs of our students. That's, that's our mission as a system. But to say all that to say that, you know, there are people who are doing really well and are very comfortable with, and there's people that are challenged with it. And, you know, the thing I will say though, is our staff's done tremendous job of reaching out for help, providing feedback to you all, providing feedback to us about here are some things that would help. Mr. Reeves and I met with a group of remote teachers last week just to listen. What's working, what's not working? What do we need to do to help support you? And I know our building principals are doing that on a daily basis as well. So I would say that it's a group problem-solving effort right now. But Gary, to be completely honest with you, you know, I continue to be blown away by the things I see our staff do. Again, because there is no handbook for this. Nobody's ever done it before. So people are trying really hard and doing the best they can.
Thanks. And I, well, you know, it's American Education Week. I would just encourage our community to continue to support. And if there's ways that we can be doing that as a community, certainly let us know because now if anything, we, you know, we've heard there's a lot of frustration. They're working long hours and, I mean, a lot of people are. But teachers are crucial in this, in this piece right now. And we need to be loving on them the best that we can. So community, why, let's put that in there too, as long as we're talking about community. So thank, I just wanna say, you know, thank you to all the, the teachers of always, but especially right now. I've got a brother and parents that are, and I mean, it's, it's, it's hard.
I say a lot of times that, you know, it's really important that we love on our people. But the other thing is we have really expert professionals in Olathe. And the thing that we can't forget is that we're highly trained to teach kids. We've never been in this environment before and it is absolutely a challenge. But one of the things that we have to continually say to our staff is teaching is still teaching and trust yourself in what you know are good decisions and that kind of thing. And, you know, the longer we step into this, the more comfortable our staff gets doing that, gets, you know, more comfortable they feel doing that as well.
Thanks.
We wanted to wait till we had a couple of weeks, particularly in hybrid with secondary, but we'll, we'll be reaching out to our, our students and our staff to get some input on suggestions, you know, what's going well, what's not? What, what do you need in, in support to be able to, to, to be more successful in, in what you wanna do? And we'll, we'll have that information and be able to, to answer that question a, a little more systemically next time we talk.
Can, can we talk about why we are not taking temperatures? There's been a lot of buzz about that.
Yes. Johnson County Health Department, as we talked about that, did not feel that that was a efficient use of resources and time. That particularly with younger students, the percentage that actually had a, a fever was fairly low and that it's, it's a, a, it's a symptom that typically occurs somewhat later. So that that individual has already been contagious in, in most cases. The, the actual temperature taking, if it's not under the tongue and, and it tends to be less accurate. So when we were talking temporal scanners, that if you come in from outside and you were hot, you'd had a ball cap on, the, the number of elevated temperatures could, could change quite a bit. Students would congregate as temperatures had to be taken coming in. And they just looked at all that and said, you know what? That, that's really not going to be a, a primary factor in you being able to, to mitigate. So they felt that the, the, the time and focus was better spent elsewhere than taking temperatures.
Thank you for that.
And if they would change that recommendation, we, we'd look at options. We looked at a number of, you know, there are a number of products out there. Ms. Hudson, do you guys have a dozen or, or better as we prepared if it was necessary to do that? So particularly at high schools our size, how are you going to get a thousand students' temperature taken? How do you logistically add the staff and the number of entrances to be able to do that so that you don't have students congregate? All, all those types of things. But they just did, did not recommend it at all.
It would be much more of a challenge for a large district like ours. Now, since our incident rates are so low and we're in hybrid, has there been any discussion, discussion from the county level that, you know, we've got that natural, a little bit of kind of shuffling around in the afternoon specifically for middle school age kids that are passed from grandma maybe to a neighbor and back and forth? You, you know, I want them in full-time if possible. Would that potentially help our rates? Or is the, the trade-off, the lack of mitigation on physical distancing not worth consideration?
I would say that's the, that's the million-dollar question. Schools have been pretty successful. Olathe has, has, has some of our neighbors. And is it because of our ability to mitigate? Is it because we, we only have half of the students in, we're able to social distance? Lunch isn't, you know, lunch is gonna be an issue when students are back in full-time. It's just structurally with numbers and everything else, it's almost impossible to, to create the social distance that's, that's being recommended. So the question is, is, is it those strategies or is it the masks? You know, what, what, what's kind of helping us keep our, our numbers down? As more school districts have started to go back full-time in-person, that will also be some data that we're gonna wanna track to see as they've moved from hybrid to in-person, what are they seeing? You know, with similar community spread, what are they seeing? How, how is that playing out? So those are all factors that we'll continue to, to look at that will help us make, make decisions as we move forward.
I would appreciate that data. And like, I know Spring Hill has been back since the 19th and they haven't had any spread. But it, it's a much smaller school district. How do our class sizes and physical rooms compare? I mean, all of those considerations would be really nice to know. And then I still am very curious about the out west districts. If, if, when you have your superintendent talks, will you ask what mitigation effort or lack thereof? I, I'm gonna compare apples and apples and it would just help a lot before we know, before we move forward.
Do the best we can to get some of that information.
Thank you.
I have a comment, a couple of comments. One, thank you for the information and going through this criteria that I've seen it here three times and I'm glad that we probably have a strong viewership and able to see that here as well tonight. So I would hope that you keep us up to date and I know you'll keep that up to date on the website. Question I have, and I know we've all received some emails over the past three or four days. Communication was sent out to parents last week about making a decision by tomorrow, November the 6th, on what they would like to do for second semester. And a lot of the comments were around, you know, making a decision so, so quick, so soon. Is there any flexibility, you know, changing that? Can you kinda go through that process?
Sure.
And what we can look for in the next 30 days and 60 days? I know that second semester will be here in 60 days.
And, and that's exactly it. None of us can say what it's gonna look like 30 or 60 or 90 days from now. So asking parents to, to, to think about how they want and where they want their student second semester, whether we look at the gating criteria tonight, we look at it next Wednesday or we look at it a week from now, that, that's not gonna be really any greater. It's not gonna point to where are we gonna be in January when we start school? So as parents have asked me that question, I've encouraged them, you've got to make a decision that's best for your students when you think about how they learn. Also knowing that there's no guarantee that where we are today is where we'll be in February or March. And I know that's, that's very difficult. The reason we set November 6th is as we looked at, and not knowing how many parents are gonna change. So how many will go from remote to in-person or in-person to remote? The formats we chose to be able to teach remote and with in-person is, is we heard this evening, you know, teaching German both in-person and virtually. All of that was contingent upon enrollment. So depending on how many people make a change, we've got significant work to do and, and to be able to do by break with Thanksgiving in there. And then you hit finals for our counselors and our principals and our teachers to, to shift staff. So if we have 500 students that go from remote to in-person, we've got to take that number of staff, reassign, recalibrate and balance class loads at the elementary, redo master schedules. And at a high school, that's, you know, you think about airplanes in the air and how do they schedule who's landing when? A high school master schedule will compete with Southwest or Delta on their flight plans any day. And you're also looking at students changing courses at semester. So principals need to, and counselors need to know, you know, they're, they're shifting from this semester class to that semester class. How many students do I have in it? Now, what was the course selection of the students that may be coming from remote to in-person or vice versa? It, it is a labor-intensive process. And that's something that we typically, in, in a normal year, would have started back in October refining that, getting ready for second semester. And we'd spend all summer doing it, getting ready for the fall. So having just a, a couple of weeks in there to, to get all that done. And we don't know how much of a shift that will be till we get the enrollment numbers back in. So November 6th was, was the latest date we felt we could push it and have that work done prior to winter break and to be able to, to communicate schedules and teachers know what I'm teaching and what, what my class period looks like, what's my supervision? All those factors. Why, I understand the desire. I'd really like to make that decision, you know, in December for January. It's just not conceivable for us to have the, the classes in place and the teachers in place and, and all of those things if, if we wait much longer.
Thank you. Back there.
The disinfectant solution that takes four minutes, how is that managed in between classes? And do we have a five-minute passing period? And then we have, who's, do they stand in the hall and wait for it to dry? Or can you talk a little bit about that?
It's just done as quick as possible. As soon as the students are leaving, a lot of times we have students doing it or the teacher get the, get it down on the surface, the work surface. And then wait for it to dry or dissipate, wipe it off. And the next set of kids come in. This is kind of the best solution for this that you can get, because there are hospital-grade ones that school districts can't get that would work faster. But to, to mitigate, we need the four minutes. And we, trying to meet that challenge, there's no way you can send a custodian for each classroom, each period. That's why we rely on staff. They've been very helpful and, and the students as well.
And we would never water that down, right?
No.
Okay.
And I would say, you know, every teacher has, has figured out a different way that seems to work for them. I've watched, you know, multiple teachers and all of them have a, of a different way, have students doing it before they leave the classroom. You know, a lot of it depends on the age group, what the, what the class is. So honestly, that answer is So honestly, that answer is gonna vary from teacher to teacher and how, how they've set it up for their classroom.
Can I ask one more? Sorry, I keep coming. How are we on our sub situation? I know there's been a lot of social media and those types of things that we've sent out related to requesting subs. Could you just touch on, are we kind of a danger level? How, what are, I mean, from a, for a community standpoint, those that may be watching, what's, what's that take to, to become one and, and how much are they needed right now?
They're, they're needed. There, there's no question. We always need substitutes, even in a non pandemic year. To, to be an emergency sub, there, there are some requirements. You can go to our website, it'll give you the minimum number of college hours you need. There's a background check, there, there's an application to, to the state. HR has worked very hard. We, we use social media. If you happen to watch Channel 5 yesterday morning, we were the job of the day for, for substitutes and, and paras. So we're trying to be creative as, as we can. We, we have had some community feedback from, you know, with parents and residents within the community have, have stepped up, not in the numbers we need yet. So, you know, subbing is, is a wonderful opportunity and I encourage everybody to, to apply. Or do we have enough? No. And when we hit this time of year, there, there's, we always have a higher need as we approach the holidays, you get flu season, and not having substitutes puts real stress on our teaching staff and, and our principals. Because when a position is unfilled, then it's a, a matter of other teachers covering that class on their plan or their supervision at the elementary level, specials teachers having to, having to cover classes. So the, the numbers of, of unfilled have, have gone up. I think they will continue to, which is not what we want. As I said, starting in March, the, the issue that may impact how we're able to provide education, more so than incident rates, will, will be the impact that all of this virus has had on our staff. Do we have the bus drivers? Do we have the food service to be able to, to serve the meals? What about our teachers? You know, how are they going to, to, you know, you reach a point where you just can't cover classes by staff piecemealing? And that's, that's a, that's a great concern, as I said, puts great pressure on them. So as of this afternoon, my understanding is we're probably 50 plus unfilled for tomorrow. Now, our HR department worked really hard throughout this evening and into tomorrow morning and we hope that number will come down, but it's, it's definitely a, a concern, not just for Olathe, but for school districts around the state. I know in one neighboring school district, they said they're down to 34 substitutes. That's a little smaller school district. Yep, but they've got only 34 individuals that are subbing on a regular basis for, for the district. And it's be, it's becoming a significant issue for them as they think about where do they go from here and, and their, their learning modality. So that's something we're watching very carefully. And there does reach a tipping point where, you know, you can't, you can't have school if, if you don't have the staff to be, to, to be able to, to do that. But our, everybody's working really hard, our teachers have worked hard, they, they've stepped up to, to cover. But that, that is a huge, a huge stress piece for them as well, when they have to give up planned time and their prep time for, for students to, to cover another class.
Would you explain that a bit? Because that's a big sacrifice that teachers are making right now that I wanna make sure the community knows. So when we don't have a sub for a class, what's that day look like?
It's gonna depend on the grade level and it will depend on, on the building. Our principals have to get pretty creative to, to make sure that, that classes are covered. You know, it's really a, has been and will continue to be an all hands on deck. So counselors may be subbing, principals may be subbing. Dr. Yeager with the curriculum coordinators has established a rotation that a, a couple days a month, they've set aside that they'll be part of our, our sub pool. So it's, it's really trying to use everyone that, that we can. Depending on, on the, the level, if it's at the high school level, you know, you've got more staff to draw from when you get to the elementary level. In years past, if you had, say, three first grade teachers, you might divide one of the, the first grade that's without a sub into the other two teachers' classrooms. Can't really do that now. So how, how do we, how, how do we do that? PE teachers, music teachers, counselors, you know, whomever building has available are having to, to step up. Other teachers giving up their planned time or their lunchtime to go cover a, a time period. You know, there, as we think about American Education Week, I think it's just an example of the, the work that goes in by everyone to try to do the best they can for our students. And that's, that's always been a challenge. It's a real challenge now and I think that will just continue to grow.
I think so. I, I've heard several mention, it's like a sprint all day long because, you know, you would have a planning period and then you could decompress at lunch with your coworkers. I mean, none of that's happening, even for kids, you know, you're all spread apart. So it's just doing it differently and all together, hopefully we can make it through this and, and meet the needs at the same time.
Any other questions? All right, then I guess we'll just end it by saying if you're somebody out there who wants to help out or somebody that's passionate about keeping schools open and has free time, please, please consider substitute teaching. All right, moving along, our action consent. Does anyone have any questions? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I would move to approve action items 4.01 through 4.07 presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McEwen, we'll give Mr. Gary the second.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McEwen?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yeah.
All right, and then on to action bids, contracts, agreements. Does anyone have any questions on 5.01 through 5.09?
Yes.
If you'd like to ask. Oh, go ahead.
Mr. Hudson or Mr. Brady, 5.06, the high school broadcast program? Did we look at, this seemed like a very plug and play type of system or turnkey product? Do you look at doing this in-house versus buying the system?
The biggest factor that prevents you from doing that is the, what's the term? The media rights fees. You wouldn't be able to, because KASB is a member of this national group that does the broadcasting, you'd have to pay media rights in order to do the broadcasting. But you could, because of being a KASB member of the team, so that prevents us from doing it. And actually, it's like a sole source for the equipment and the broadcasting for KASB as well.
Do you know when we're projected to break even on this?
A little less than four years in the conservative estimates of what other districts have seen in the way of subscription rates. Blue Valley and Shawnee Mission are already in this. We piloted this at East, was it the end of last year or just early this year?
East.
Yep, but last year or just this past semester?
For Shawnee Mission.
No. When did we pilot it at East?
This year, this fall.
Okay, this fall.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other questions on 4.01 through 4.09? If not, oh, I would entertain a motion, we'll just lump them together.
Mr. Beveridge? It's 5.01.
I'm sorry.
That's right.
5.01 to 5.09.
I move to approve 5.01 through 5.09 as recommended.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Felter, second by Ms. Schultz.
Mr. McEwen?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes. Okay, action other. We need a delegate and an alternate delegate for the KASB convention, which I think is gonna be online this year.
Do we know who's planning to attend?
I know I am attending. Is anyone else?
I am as well.
I will attend.
I think, I think Mr. Whitcliff is, is well.
As well, okay.
I think, I, I'll have to check again.
Okay. So typically, this is a pretty easy job, if anyone's interested. So we need
I'm happy to.
To make a nomination and then we move to cease nominations. We'll see if we can get this right for the second time since I've been on the board.
Let's see, I'd, I'd make a mo, let's see. I wanna make a motion?
Make a nomination.
Nomination.
Sorry. I wanna nominate Kristen Schultz as our delegate.
And then I will nominate Brian Geary as the alternate.
Second.
Wait a minute.
So we don't need a second?
Hold on. A second? Okay, it's alternate delegate, right?
Yeah. So then we need a
I need to make a motion to cease nominations.
Yes.
Can we get a second for that?
Second.
Who said that?
We had it.
Yeah, okay. Motion by Mr. Geary, second by Ms. Felter.
Hold on, I gotta turn pages, sorry.
No problem.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McEwen?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Ready for the second motion?
Yep, go ahead.
I move to appoint Kristen Schultz as a delegate and Brian Geary as the alternate delegate to represent Olathe Public Schools at the 2020 Kansas Association of School Boards Delegate Assembly.
Second.
Okay, motion by Ms. Felter, we'll give second to Mr. Boyd.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McEwen?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
All right, moving along, 6.02, right away at Canyon Creek Elementary Gleason Road. Does anyone have any questions about this? And if not, entertain a motion.
I would move to approve 6.02 is presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McEwen, second by Ms. Felter.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McEwen?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
All right, moving along, we have our future action items, 7.01 to 7.12, that will be addressed in here probably next month. And then we also have the written information, the October Head Start Directors Report for everyone to look at. So if there's no comments on that, I will move to board topics for discussion if anyone would like to.
I do.
Okay.
I would just like to remind everybody in the audience and everybody watching that tomorrow is the Olathe Public School Foundation Autumn Breakfast at 8:00 AM. It's online, visit the website and be a part of the Autumn Breakfast.
That's right, thank you for doing that. Anyone else have any?
I'd just make, again, I kinda mentioned it briefly earlier, but the, you know, American Education Week obviously is, is important, always, every week of the year. And this one we happen to choose and I just wanna say thank you to any of the teachers that are probably upgrading papers and, and those types of things right now. I just wanna say thank you for all you're doing now and, and always. So just wanna recognize that, that group of people especially right now.
And I'll just reiterate that as a board member and as a parent of three in the district, I see how hard the teachers and the staff are working every day and you are appreciated by all of us. All right, if no other topics for discussion, superintendent comments? Mr. Allison, you have anything you'd like to add?
Two real quick to, to follow on American Education Week. Our schools have never been more challenged in this country than, than they have been over the last year plus, as everybody has been challenged under a global pandemic. But our schools are such key components of our community and I believe that not, not just in Olathe, but in so many school districts across the country, there's, why they may have never been challenged like this, they've never been more dedicated, worked harder to try to provide for our students. So as we saw for our teachers and, and staff and, and everybody that makes school possible in the great video at the, at the beginning, that they, they deserve a, a huge thank you now and every day as we move forward, as, as they work to continue to, to serve our kids. And the other piece, a little bit on, on my soapbox is community spread will impact our schools. There's no question. So we need to make the right decisions, do the right things, bring that community spread down so that our next conversation and as we look at our data doesn't look as, as positive because of actions we've taken as a community. If we really care about our schools, we're gonna do what's necessary to make sure that we, we can continue to move forward. So with that, I'll conclude my remarks.
All right, thank you. And my understanding is we do not need an executive session man. All right, so then